Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 28 Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting for the Kitsap Regional Library. I am President Eric Fong. With me are Vice President Gina Steiner and fellow trustees Monica Blackwood and Eric Sisney. Marwan Cameron is out on an excused absence. So we'll go to the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement. Monica.
There we go. Inspiring curiosity and connection is the library's mission statement.
Thank you, Monica. And we'll go to Jason for welcoming introductions.
Yeah, good evening. With us tonight, usual suspects, Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Deputy Director, Chief Financial and Rating Officer Dan Baer, Deputy Director Shannon Peterson of Public Services, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle, Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeanne Allen. Excused is the Director of Information Technology and Facilities Maintenance, Mike Rose. In his place, Manning the Technology is the very capable director of, or manager of IT, I'm sorry. We just call her the amazing, the Amazing Joyce. And hopefully, you've all got a chance to meet Joyce, and she's amazing and will be running the technology. Special guest, Branch Manager of Pauls Bow, Pam Crowe, who's going to talk about, I won't steal her thunder, but it's going to be very nice to talk about important and new things happening at Pauls Bow.
Sounds great. Thank you, Jason. There is no public comment, so we will go to Item Six, Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. We have 6.01, the minutes of the September 23, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, 6.02, payment of September expenditures, and 6.03, surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for September 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Hi. Opposed? Good. To move forward, thank you. Okay, so we will go to 7.01, Mission Moment, Pauls Bow Library Space Updates. Pam Crowe, Pauls Bow Branch Manager, welcome and thank you for being here.
Good evening and thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to share updates that's happening in the Pauls Bow community, just the Pauls Bow branch location. I have a presentation for you regarding new meeting room spaces that we have been supported with the friends putting those spaces in place. And first off, I would like to thank our Pauls Bow friends of the library. They were key stakeholders and investors in bringing these spaces into fruition. And thank you, Joyce, for navigating to the slides. The slides don't have a lot of words, but pictures mean everything, so we're going to look at some pictures as I navigate this presentation and then welcome any questions you might have. Go ahead to the next slide. So I want to remind you that Pauls Bow has three existing spaces. There's our large community room that's available for reservation online through our online booking system. And then the next slide, please. There's our small meeting space that accommodates, you know, a small group of people, about 10 people, that also has technology available, just as the large space that is available to be booked online as well. And next slide, please. Now, we're going to talk about the new spaces that were put into place. This picture right here represents an aha moment that I had when, you know, we had been experienced high ask in the community or high demand of spaces at Pauls Bow. Consistently, on a weekly basis, there's an ask of, do you have a room that I can use? And now, as you know, we have the small meeting room, we have our large meeting room, and we have a study room, which I'll share about as well. There still was a need to have more spaces available. One morning, I'm putting newspapers and magazines in their appropriate places at the start of opening, and I'm, as you can see there, I don't know if you can slightly see that there, to the left, is a shelf that's right there at the edge of that picture. So that is where our newspapers and magazines live, and that is our reference corner. And I look up and I realize, maybe there's an opportunity to have meeting spaces in that corner and then still make sure that we have those same resources available. We did not get rid of our reference materials. As you know, reference materials are available online, so we do have a small amount of reference materials, which is there, right there, as you can see from the sign on that shelf there, that are still available for people to come in and access. And our magazines and newspapers were not, they did not go away. Those were relocated to another area. Almost when you walk in the door, they actually present themselves before they were around the corner. So if you can go to the next slide, Joyce. That is another viewpoint of the area that I had my eyes on. And to Shannon's credit, I sent those pictures to her, and I said, what do you think about this? Having meeting room spaces in that reference corner and do a little bit of relocating of collections to highlight them. And I am very pleased, as I'm sure you know, that, you know, Shannon brought it forward to Jason and got that approval with the proposal of going to our friends to see if they can support the finance and implementation of our new meeting room spaces. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Ta-da, that's a representation of one of the rooms. As you can see, it's lovely. You have space that accommodates for people. There is a USB port there that folks can plug in technology. That table there does, is adjustable table for folks that might need to have an adjustable height difference. So that space also, what's lovely about that particular room is that you can see you have windows there that you can see on the outside, as well as you have, you know, some windows there that face to our teen area. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And then that is the other room. That's a picture showing the viewpoint entrance of both of the rooms. And that, the room on the left has a butcher block style table in which the other room will eventually get, and it is beautifully done, and I definitely want to give a shout out to Brady who worked in bringing that beautiful table in the space. As you can see, there's a monitor there on the left. Monitors will be brought into the both spaces and accessible for patrons to use. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So I also want to highlight the numbers in reference to the spaces that are currently reserved online and what is being reflected as going from 2019, when we had 543 total bookings, and then getting you up to speed in reference to when our community room was open and available to be accessed during non-open hours. In 2021, September of 2021, we had 558 bookings, as you can see, from June to May, and 162 of those bookings were during non-open hours. So clearly, there was an ask of the community, and the library responded. And I just wanted to highlight our current spaces and reservation system that folks are leaning into and accessing and using those spaces. Looking at the 23 to 24, you see 418 bookings, and then 22 to 23, you see 352 bookings. The reason why I wanted to highlight this is keep in mind that we have our study room that we manually record the use of that space. So that, those numbers are not being captured, so I want to highlight what's going to be next. Go ahead and go to the next slide. All spaces that we have available for use will be brought online and booked through our reservation system. So we will then capture the use of our large meeting room, the small meeting room, the two new rooms, plus the study room. Currently, the study room, again, is manually booked and not on our online reservation system, so all of those spaces will be reserved online. I want to give you an idea regarding the new meeting room spaces. If I remember correctly, yes, we were closed from September 29 through Wednesday, October 1st, to have those spaces installed with the new spaces. On Thursday, October 2nd, immediate use. And not only at the start of the first day, regularly used. And I, we have high use of those two new spaces, to the point that today, before I left to come here, I counted the number of hours since those spaces are not online and being captured. We are doing manual bookings, but they will be brought online. I believe it's November, the 1st of the month, or November 3rd. Those two new spaces, plus our small, our study room, and were, I think, used for about 20 hours today. And I left at 4:00. So we're from 10:00 to 4:00. The spaces that are currently not online and will be brought online had 20 hours of use. That may not be every day that occurs, but is, those spaces are being used. It's hopping. So I also want to highlight, by the time I left, with the 20 hours of use and the two new spaces and the study room, that does not count the fact that the small meeting room that is, was reserved online today. I had, I think it had three reservations. And the large meeting room, that's not counting those in the hours that they were in use. So that's what we can look forward to, is you'll see those numbers that were on the previous slide elevate and bump up. And I really, really appreciate the fact that the friends saw that there was demand and happily supported and met it. And I can't give them enough recognition, as well as facilities. Next slide, please. So on that note, definitely want to thank the Pauls Bow friends of the library, as well as leadership, our facilities team, Mike and Brady. Mike did a lot of heavy lifting and research, as well as Brady, and our communications team, as well as the Pauls Bow team. Next slide. Any questions?
Thanks so much for the presentation, Pam, and thanks for being here. I know that the, there's some really passionate groups that use the Pauls Bow community rooms, the meeting rooms. Can you share some of the groups that attend regularly?
Regular users consist of HOAs, you know, community interest-based groups. We have a line dancing group. Sometimes I really want to go down there and join them, but a line dancing group. Some of the smaller spaces might have some meetups in reference to possibly some, if I remember correctly, oh, Fishline has used our space. And also the, some of the, what am I trying to say? The homeschool groups use the space. So it is a variety of folks. Sometimes someone is maybe, and this is some of the areas that I really, folks have a lot of respect for the use of our space, and I really appreciate, you know, how they are engaging and following our expectations of the use of the space. There might be someone that has, you know, a business, and there might be other business owners that are in the same business, and they might have a networking type of information sharing piece, and so, all sorts of use, all sorts. And it's wonderful to see.
That's great. Yeah, Mike was really excited about sharing the findings and the thoughts about putting the meetings rooms together. It was great to see it all come together so quickly and that it's being utilized so well. So congratulations to you. Any other questions from the board?
Well, I think it's great that the library is filling a need that is often unmet, and you're bringing in people that probably, a lot of them wouldn't maybe come to the library, and now they know where the library is, and maybe we'll get more people for that.
That, I think the word is getting out of the spaces, and obviously, with spaces in a library, you have resources right there at your fingertips. So I believe there's been occurrences of somebody's doing some research, so they have seen that organic pairing of, I'm in a library, I'm using their space, let me go ahead and ask some research questions. So that is organic, and it's beautiful to see that come to fruition. Yeah.
So this is super exciting, and I know several organizations that are always looking for meeting space. My question is, because I am not familiar with the kind of the guidelines, how long can, like, an organization book out the space? Is it like a two-hour cap? Is it a five-hour cap? Any of that? Can they, can they book on a regular basis?
Great question. A space can be booked up to 12 times a year. So that means there's a great opportunity within that. You can book the large meeting room 12 times during a calendar year. You can look, book the small meeting room 12 times during a calendar year. You can book one of the other small meeting rooms 12. So there's not going to be any parameters put in place regarding the fact that you've already booked a space here 12 times a year, so we're not, you know, that would be a barrier to folks being able to use the space. So another thing is, is the large meeting room and the small meeting rooms, you can book them for the day up to, this large meeting room is, you can book up to three days in advance because of the non-hours access piece. We want to make sure that folks get what they need, get the badge to access it. The small meeting room spaces, you can book up to 12 hours in advance, and you can book it all day. The study room, you, when it's brought online, you can book it for two hours. However, if nobody else has asked to use it, or it's not booked, we can extend your time. And we're, and I'm excited to see those numbers reflected, because we do that a lot with the study room and the small, existing small meeting room. If it's not been booked, then, and if somebody comes in and wants to use it, if we do a first-come, first-served situation, because it wasn't booked, we're not going to have that space sit empty, and someone needs a space to use. So we will manually note that someone is, you know, come in to use it, and they have it for an hour, and then we will extend it another hour if nobody has asked for it. So now, with all the spaces being brought online, we will be able, obviously, they'll be bookable, and then if no one else is using it, we'll extend the time. And word is getting out. It is getting out. So, great questions. I felt to highlight the fact that the small meeting room spaces, I don't know if you know the background on the fact that those are modular, pre-made cubicles or spaces that were researched in, ended up being a really good fit. I, again, am thanking the friends for their support. If that wasn't a feasible solution, I don't think we would have gotten these spaces if they needed to be built for another couple of years. I think it would have really been, the fact that this came together so beautifully and with thought and intent is amazing.
Yeah, it did come together quickly. It was a matter of days, was it not?
That, it felt that way. You know, but I, if you're talking about from the introduction of the idea, I think I, you know, it's like, I'm going to send this to Shannon and see what she says. I think the introduction, the idea, maybe I presented it in early spring of this year, and then the spaces being open and accessible and available October 1st. So, you know.
Days, several of them.
Yeah, that felt like, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I'll jump in for a second. It seems like it was days, but I mean, I think originally, we had always talked about an ability to put pods, which, you know, you have these prefab meeting room pods that are sold by various vendors. And in my attendance at ALA Annual, Dan and I checked out some options, and, you know, Mike found a company that could do pods and just had an idea of like, why not take these existing walls to create something more custom, just because of our, the floor space within Pauls Bow, I don't think allowed for those particular meeting room pods, and we needed something a little more customizable for how things are actually used in that branch. And so, really, the credit goes to facilities and public services being able to sort of envision sort of a niche solution for Pauls Bow, and one that we can then scale out to other locations. So I think the sky's the limit in terms of what we can do when we obviously put our, all of our heads together, and we've got the talent to be able to do some of this stuff, which is great, because we don't have to be relied on out-of-the-box solutions that don't quite fit our needs. And we also have the ability, owning the Pauls Bow location, to, you know, have a little more, more space to kind of build in there how we want it to. So, and we might not be able to do that with the rest of our facilities, but there are solutions that are kind of already ready-made and out of the box that we can kind of deploy. The good thing about that is, then those solutions will be able to be moved around to other locations, because they're modular, they're able to be moved to different locations and different spaces within locations. So if we can ever stop flooding at Sylvan, we might be able to realize some meeting room opportunities, and at least some opportunities for neurodivergent staff and patrons, because these have many different uses. And so digging into our equity goals and being able to serve a greater populace, we'll be looking at the pods in general for how do we cater to, you know, all of our populations that use our libraries. So I think it was good work, and I had a chance, as I talked about in our committee meeting, of using that space. Thank you, Pam, for offering up the space when I worked there. It was great. And I think I probably broke in one of those spaces.
Yes, you did. One of our first ones, use it. And well said on just encompassing, you know, how we meet community needs and pounce on an opportunity, and it was wonderful to see it come to fruition. It was, it's exciting. So, and I do hope that other locations get an opportunity to have similar spaces at their locations. I also want to give credit to Mike and the fact that I asked about phone booth-like pods, similar to what Silverdale has, and Mike knocked it out of the fence. You know, he's like, I see opportunity here for spaces that can accommodate more people. And so that was wonderful to see him, again, think outside of the box, you know. So, yeah. So, all right. Very welcome.
Great. Any other questions, comments, anyone?
Okay.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, team, we'll go on to 7.02, Board Member Updates. Who would like to go first?
Well, I can report on Manchester, I guess. A couple of things happened. First of all, we lost a longtime friend of Manchester, Ray Pardo. He ran the salmon bake for about 18 years, and he's going to really be missed. Secondly, the Friends of Manchester Library rent the land that the branch is located on from the Port of Manchester, and they've had a 50-year lease, which is due in about four years. But they were worrying about the change in the, we've had a real cheap lease, a dollar a year. And anyway, we're worried, hope that that continues. So they exercised the option of renewing early, and thankfully, the Port of Manchester agreed. And so now we're, the lease is not going to go until 2079. And we paid that lease up. It's paid up now, 2079, so we could afford that. Anyway, so, that's it, I guess.
I went to the Bainbridge Public Library Board Meeting a couple of weeks ago. One of the big things going on there is they are getting ready to install solar panels. So that's a very cool, they've got a lot of financial support from the, for the community as well. It's very cool to see that come together. And I also got a chance to meet the new Bainbridge Branch Manager, Colleen. So it's great to be able to connect with her.
Well, I attended the strategic plan meeting tonight, so I'll just jump right in there. Talking to Jason, I want to announce that we signed the MOU with CK. And at Port Orchard, we're going to be looking into a grant for next year, and we're going to seek to fill the HR position by the end of the fourth quarter this year. And our patrons might have noticed some closures at Sylvan Way. We want people to know that we really care about health and human safety. And so it's an old building, and it's had some plumbing issues, and Jason and his team are assessing it on the next holiday, and their priority is to seek continuity in operations. So we appreciate everyone's patience with that. Operations and finance, they're looking at ensuring the strategic plans and priorities align with the budget, so really marrying these, those two things together. And for public service, for '26, we're focusing on the value. That's the service that we will be highlighting for training and data and evaluation. That's what everyone will be looking at, is defining value and what that means to the, to the library. So we heard about Pauls Bow tonight. Thank you for that lovely presentation and your creative thinking. Also happy to announce, at the Martin Luther King Branch, starting on November 1st, they'll have extended hours on a Saturday. We'll go from 2:00 PM till 5:00 PM. And then for organizational goals for '26, the team has been working on the infrastructure to ensure the budget reflects the levy priorities. So we will see growth in service and partnerships, and modular meeting spaces, and improved furnishings and seating, and other things discussed in the levy. So that's what I took away from the strategic planning meeting. Did I miss anything, Eric, that you can think of?
No, we got to, we got to cover a lot of ground, and it's exciting to see things really start to come together. So, thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
7.04, Financial Report. Dan Baer, do you have anything to add beyond what is in the report?
I do not. To be perfectly honest.
Well, that's terrific. Anybody have any questions for Dan? Okay, we'll go to 7.05, Jason, Library Director's Report.
Yes, good evening. Past month in September was really a period of reflection and renewal for us. As you know, we had a busy and engaging summer with the successful levy campaign, yay, and our 80-year anniversary campaign that's still going. And summer learning was a hit again, and all the community engagement that happened, along with life. And so for us, it's been an opportunity to step back a bit and to really channel the momentum of that moment into building next year. As you heard in the strategic and long-range planning meeting, we're laying the framework for not only next year, but the years beyond, which requires a lot of work. And I've said to leadership, the real work starts now, because if that was the work to get the ballot, then the work to really realize levy promises we take seriously. We hope that in between now and the next opportunity, we're not facing any funding
We hope that in between now and the next opportunity, we're not facing any funding shortages, but should the cycle continue, we'll probably be back in seven to 10 years. And so, when we come back, we want to say that we've achieved our goals within the parameters we set. So, right now, it's about the building and laying the framework for all of that. I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And so, September is also library card signup month, and so, if you have been in libraries in September, it's all about the library cards and the beautifully designed cards that were part of the 80-year anniversary, of course, were available for the picking. And so, you know, hopefully, really good engagement in our branches in terms of getting folks signed up or resigned up, or renewed for library cards. Also, in September, we had the opportunity to have a, an outing, to see the, to coma renears for a baseball game, to celebrate the collective efforts of our staff to help pass a levy, and to support the 80-year anniversary. So, you know, wellness and, and being able to celebrate with our teams is a big part of what we've come to realize is necessary for us in terms of keeping that engagement alive. And so, it's a great opportunity to get out and see a game. Unfortunately, I missed it, I had competing events, but a good time was had by all who attended. And then, lastly, I think in terms of metrics, numbers continue to look good in terms of engagement, collection, in terms of circulation, numbers are up, door counts are up, and, you know, I really want to congratulate staff and leadership for, you know, keeping. It's easier to do in the summer because people are out, but also harder, because it's nice out, and people are out in the summer. But seeing those numbers kind of continue, you kind of have a natural dip-off in certain areas. But in terms of outreach, and in terms of like, the physical checkouts that are related to, because I think the outreach has an effect in getting people in. When you have people out who are doing outreach and who are talking up the library, you know, you have different types of library users. And oftentimes, when I've been out for outreach, I've talked to people who are exclusively digital users. So, to try to, you know, have opportunity to get people to read us at the libraries, and I really want to give a lot of credit to our marketing department and our branch teams and public services for really pushing the 80-year anniversary campaign, because I felt like that got a lot of traction in terms of people to reconnect with their libraries, and we certainly saw that from the numbers. And so, I think the challenge for me to all of our staff will be to continue that, because next year looks like a year of back to the basics. We talked about the organizational focus being on customer service and kind of re-centering ourselves on why we're here, which is to serve the customer. And so, looking at '26, it really is about stepping back and all of us sharpening our skills on customer service, and what does that look like? I think from an internal standpoint, like for me, it's how do I serve my leadership team well? How do I serve the board well, my internal customers? And then, you know, for our library folks who work in various departments, especially like back of the house, it's how do we serve each other? Because it takes each department to work with another to be able to get services out. So, everybody has a, a close partner in terms of departments they work with, and they have internal customers. So, we'll be focused on the mechanics of that. What does it look like? Taking your cues from what is customer, customer service, good customer service look like in other industries? I think that's going to be important. So, Deputy Director Peterson will be leading us through at least the leadership component of it, reading a book about customer service and what that means for us, and we'll be, you know, extrapolating that into boots-on-the-ground customer service. We'll be doing trainings in our staff day next year about customer service. We'll have a speaker to talk about what that means. And really, the goal will be to marry it all in with our strategic goals. In terms of other news, Safety Committee in September focused on healthy sleep practices, which we could all use, and certainly I could use. In terms of our strategic priorities, we talked about them a little bit in the committee meeting. I just want to go through what that means, particularly for our community that might be looking. There's a lot to pack in. I think firstly, you will notice that we've organized all of our strategic goals, you know, according to our strategic plan, and that's going to be important. We talked about when we unveiled our plan to ensure that everything we did had alignment, and that's going to be important, because in order to validate all the things we want to do, we, we want it to match up to our strategic priorities. And so, having said that, you know, one of the bigger things that I think as a library system, and getting back to the basics too, is how do we serve the youth? How do we able to build capacity to do more with youth, to strengthen the ability for, for instance, from babies to young adults? How do we strengthen their, not only capacity for literacy, but how do we strengthen the job market by creating opportunities for workforce development, STEM learning programs, and the like? And so, the first step to that is really reducing any barriers there might be for accessing our services. So, we'll be taking a heavy look at how do we impart language access to the organization, either through building capacity for folks to be able to use languages they already speak? How do we compensate them for that? What is the pathway for that? How are we able to get tools to help with translation? How do we ensure that our collections reflect the people who are using the library? And those who want to use the library whose languages aren't reflected? It's a heavy, you know, it's a balance between how to do that successfully, and how to not just to waste money and getting materials just to get materials. So, we'll focus on that. Building collective impact also through how do we get out into the community more? And so, we'll be looking at mobile services and how we scale up mobile services in terms of getting into the community more, serving the underserved. That's to be a big part of what we're starting to scale up in terms of 2026, and how we built that out throughout the years. And then, after-school programs, and making sure that we still have opportunities for not only young kids, but teens and young adults to still participate and find value in that. So, we're still working with our internal teams about how summer learning will look next year and beyond. And then, what really kind of settles with me and resonates with me is this idea of satellite collections, community collections, being able for community partners who don't have resources to have collections within their midst, and to be able to have pop-up collections in various places, because we know that there are barriers to accessing the physical library. And so, how do we do that? Vis-à-vis book lockers, mobile, you know, pop-ups, any number of opportunities that we might be able to realize. And so, it'll take a while to scale all of that up, but ultimately, we want a balance, offering more collections, both in specific areas, and how do we build capacity to have more of a budget for collections? And so, I'm really happy with the work this team is continuing to do. It isn't all finalized yet, but we have the framework for what we want to do, and I'm really proud to be on this team with a bunch of capable leaders who are leading some capable people in our libraries. And so, it's been a really good summer, and looking forward to moving on and giving you a better picture of what that will look like in the board meetings to come. And that's all I have. Any questions or comments? Or both?
Thank you, Jason. Does, does anybody have any questions, comments? All right, appreciate it, Jason. We'll go to 9.01, Resolution 2025-05, Establishing the Schedule of Paid Calendar Holidays and All Staff Training Dates in Calendar Year 2026. Jason?
Yes. Just the setup, this is pretty standard for us. As a leadership team, we have been setting the table for what '26 will look like, and the Resolution 25, 2025-05 sets forth all of the paid holidays and trainings as we have, as is presented. And so, I would ask the board for a motion to approve said resolution, and we will be set.
Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And we'll go to 2025-06, Resolution Establishing Dates, Times, and Locations of Monthly Regular Meetings of the Board of Trustees of the Kitsap County Rural Library District. I think we could talk about this for a couple of hours.
Yeah, I'm going to need a bit of time for this one. As per usual, we've set the table according to what the table looks like this year. Same convention with respects to, with respect to the board meetings happening in the same convention as they normally do, with the exception of our holiday months, which we, either in, either in November or December, we have to move the meeting based on where Christmas is. So, it's all there. I would ask the board again for a motion to approve this particular Resolution 25, 2025-06.
Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll go to housekeeping, future meeting dates. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November 18th. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.